Call the meeting to order. Mr. Denae lead us in the pledge, please. Take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Shivi, Rekis, Zadra, Delgado, George, Jordan, Keshel.
This time we'll go to item A4, public comment.
Good afternoon, and good to all see you again. My name is Jeff Church. I retired from the Reno Police Department, own property, live in the city of Reno. I'd like to address four different issues today as time allows. First, I am asking that you check and see why Deputy Chief Ron Glensor received a $376,000 buyout, including a $38,000 buyout in vacation time. Please tell me why the public records request at that time that was made and furnished did not include any reference to Deputy Chief Glensor? Was there an intentional cover-up in public records law? So basically, we just need to find out if this payout of $376,000 was legal. Was it a mistake? If it's a mistake, can we get any of that money back? Secondly, I have questions about fire stations being closed in Reno over 100 days during the 90-day peak summer period. My third concern is that it's reported that Reno applied for another safer grant but has failed to get the governing body approval for that grant. While council people may have been briefed individually to try and get around the open meeting law, reportedly Reno refuses to supply copies of the application that are clearly of taxpayer concern, and so it's not very transparent. And finally, I want to make Reno and others aware that there's a way to save money on gas and electric rates. San Diego has a nonprofit organization known as UCAN, basically self-funded, that acts as a watchdog over rates and spending. For big users like casinos and government, such a nonprofit here could easily pay for itself in savings. And I have given you handouts of all that material. As far as the fire issues, as a result of a formal public records request, Reno reported that during the 90-day summer period ending September 30th, they closed two fire stations over 126 times. Somerset Station 19 was closed 84 times. 68 of that was full 24-hour days and 16 partial days. This, of course, is area of concern. Station 7 on Skyline closed 42 times, 32 of which were full 24-hour days and then 10 partial days. And I have a few questions on that that I'd like answered. Is it true that when Truckee Meadows Fire responds to a jurisdiction that's later determined to be city, that they're ordered to leave by Reno Fire Department based on contract violations? And then what happens, for example, in Somerset when you have a firefighter that calls in sick? So you have the four-person crew, now you're down to three, and you decide not to hire overtime. What happens to those three firefighters? Do they leave that station unprotected? And where do they go? What happens to them, based again on the union contract? And is it true, again, that when you do have a four-person crew, that one of them is authorized to go run errands, such as go shopping, et cetera, which essentially leaves us with a three-person crew anyway? So I think those are all issues that the taxpayer would like to know. Again, on the safer grant, we'd like to see the application. On Deputy Chief Glensor, I do want to mention that he earned over $100,000 more than the highest-paid city employee in that time period, that being the $376,000. As part of the buyout, it reportedly was for 28 weeks. However, he received $142,000 for that 28 weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, sir. Hi. I'm Terry Glenn-Hamrick. I've lived in Reno since 1988, retired U.S. Navy SEALs, and I've noticed some problems in our community. We have problems with the homeless, and I wish to probably make a proposal that I establish a safe location on Sutro and Fourth Street and Montello, and it'd be a nice, safe area away from downtown, and I need to get a variance on that, and I'd like to get it started by the first of the year. Thank you, sir.
Christopher Corbett.
Good afternoon, Chris Corbett-Panda. In addition to Albany, New York, two victories in Oxford and Westford, Massachusetts passing the following: Restoring Constitutional Governance Resolution of Oxford, Massachusetts, whereas Oxford is not a battlefield subject to the laws of war; and whereas Federal Judge Katherine Forrest has ruled Section 1021 of the 2012 NDAA is unconstitutional; and whereas the U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that neither Congress nor the President can constitutionally authorize the detention and/or disposition of any person in the United States or citizen of the United States under the law of war who is not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger; and whereas for the purpose of this resolution, the terms arrest, capture, detention under the law of war, disposition under the law of war, and law of war are used in the same sense and shall have the same meaning as such terms have in the 2012 NDAA, Section 1021(c), and therefore be it resolved that notwithstanding any treaty, federal, state, or local law or authority enacted or claimed, including but not limited to an authorization for use of military force, National Defense Authorization Act, or any similar law or authority enacted or claimed by Congress or the Office of the President directed at any person in Oxford who is not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger, it is unconstitutional and therefore unlawful for any person to: a) Arrest or capture any person in Oxford or citizen of Oxford within the United States with the intent of detention under the law of war; or b) Actually subject a person in Oxford to disposition under the law of war; or c) Subject any person to targeted killing in Oxford or citizen of Oxford within the United States; and be it further resolved that Oxford requests the Massachusetts State Legislature recognize the duty of the state of Massachusetts to interpose itself between unconstitutional use of patients by the federal government or its agents and the people of this state, as well as the duty to defend the unalienable natural rights of the people, all of which is consistent with our oaths to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Massachusetts against all enemies, foreign and domestic; and be it further resolved that Oxford requests our congressional delegation commence immediately with efforts to repeal the unconstitutional sections of the 2012 NDA to wit Sections 1021 and 1022, and any other section or provision which will have the same or substantially the same effect on any person in the United States not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger; and be it finally resolved that Oxford requests our congressional delegation introduce, support, and secure the passage of legislation which clearly states that Congress not only does not authorize, but in fact prohibits, the use of military force, military detention, military trial, extraordinary rendition, or any other power of the law of war against any person in the United States not serving in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in the time of war. Way to go, Webster and Oxford, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm still recovering a little bit, yet to be patient, from my poor treatment at the VA Hospital. I missed my funeral by one day, I've said that before, but I've come back pretty much, and I am actually running for Mayor of Sparks, asked by Gino, but I guess now he is going to get extended and he can run again, which is fine. But I was a little disappointed at our last Sparks Senior, I mean, Council meeting. After that incident at the school, there was not one parent, one teacher, only Chief Allen there to speak about that. I think that was very poor. I think you're going to have to get more input to help the police and the neighborhoods. They just can't do it. And so I go out and I walk the neighborhoods, I walk the alleys, check everything. Pitts knows. Anyway, I wanted to say, since the last meeting, there's been a big improvement down at the shelter on Reckon Street. One thing left out: no crosswalk crossing Reckon Street. You need a crosswalk, they're real bad. All them people, hundreds, back and forth, no crosswalk. Okay, that's real minor that Pitts will get that taken care of. One last thing I want to say, oh, I got more than one, but one of them is, I've had a little incident with the school police not saluting the flag, when all the students do and the coaches. I think we corrected that with the chief. When I had one incident now at Reno Cascade Mobile Park, you can't fly American flag there, and we've got Veterans Day coming up, and quite a few of them are flying them illegally in there, according to the mobile home rules. I think I'll change that real quick. Okay, the last thing I'm doing, dealing with the governor, something that should be done that you can do real quick, everybody now understands the blue sticker. I have a disabled veteran plate, so I don't really need one, I don't like disabled, but I come up with same thing, smaller, where you can put on your collar, on your scooter. When you go in the store, they won't look at you funny when you're using the scooter. I've been challenged at the senior center, why am I sitting at the disabled table? Well, I'm a disabled veteran. I'm not going to bring my blue sticker in and then get a ticket in the parking lot, which I'd go to court and win anyway. But the little sticker would be real good, and everybody knows what it means. Just a small. And then the senior, if they took a taxi, they could put it in a taxi for one trip and park, the taxi could park and handicap, go to the store and take them home. Real simple problem, simple solution. So, one last thing, I think that's about it, that was my time, 39 seconds, we don't want to overrun. But thanks for calling down and getting something done at the senior center, and it can be more help there. Thanks.
How you doing? Eddie Lorton for the record, City Council. I ended up, I was having to leave a little early at the last meeting, and something caught my eye on the settlement with the parking company here, and I noticed a few things if we could, right off the bat on the original agreement here, it was done with Storage Systems Technologies LLC, which you all got copies of that, and all of a sudden I want to know, when it came time for the agreement, how it came up after Curb Systems LLC and where the switch was made. I asked for the tool on how that switch was made, and nobody could clarify that for me with Lynette, and I was wondering how they switch companies like that in the middle of a transaction when they knew it was time for a lawsuit. And then after that, I also noticed on the third page, while I was looking after the contract, there was supposed to be a performance bond right here for $460,000, that if it didn't perform, that the city was supposed to get $460,000. What happened to that? And how did we settle for a lousy $7,500, which was over here in the settlement agreement? So why would we settle for $7,500 when we were supposed to have a performance bond for $460,000? And then I noticed also, under the staff report, we had no mention whatsoever of this performance bond that was supposed to be taken out. So why didn't we have any mentioning of this performance bond, and why wasn't it collected on? And how'd the contract names get changed when it was time for a lawsuit? But I just simply asked through Lynette to get this information, and then all of a sudden there was an information blackout. So I don't know why we would be hiding this. I don't know why we would settle for $7,500 when we're supposed to have this performance agreement. Why didn't we collect our $460,000, is what I'd like to know? And we settled for $7,500. And I wondered also if there was a closed meeting on this issue to where anything was talked about before we discuss it with the public and why it wasn't on the staff report. So I'm sure there's a good reason, I just would have wanted to know why we didn't collect on the performance agreement and settle for $7,500 instead of $460,000. So could I please get that information from somebody? I mean, it should be public knowledge, we want to know. So if we could arrange that through the city manager, that'd be nice. But does anybody know why we didn't collect that $460,000? Anyone? And we settle for $7,500? That's a joke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You all know my story of my crash, so I was hoping I wouldn't have to read that. I have the statistics. If I could read the statistics for the city over the up-to-date this year and up-to-date last year, is that okay, sir? Hello?
Sure you can. You brought it, didn't you?
I told you, I was told to be nice, you son of a dud.
Mark, you brought something to read. Read it.
Okay, sir. Last year, there were 557 arrests. This year, there were 638 arrests. Last year, there was 186 crashes. This year, there was 173 crashes. Last year, there's four fatalities. This year, there's only one. And 58% of the drunk drivers were out-of-towners. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, Council. My name is Cody Bass. I'm a resident of Lake Tahoe, and I come to speak to you today about medical marijuana. I am the founder and executive director of Tahoe Wellness Cooperative, which is the licensed cooperative in Lake Tahoe, licensed by the city of South Lake Tahoe. I really look forward to working with the city and the city council to pass some regulatory processes for cooperatives to be able to exist and medical cannabis businesses within the city of Reno. Since we've existed in South Lake Tahoe, we've proven to be a beneficial part of the community. We provide multiple services to members of our community beyond just medical cannabis, and we have a model that lives, that's shown to be a very beneficial thing. This can be something that I really, you know, we can form laws, form regulations, to make this a very, very beneficial thing. And there's plenty of patients, plenty of people that need access to medical cannabis. Giving them safe access to medical cannabis is something that I think you guys will find as a beneficial part to your citizens, and I really look forward to having an open process. I also make myself available to any committees or anything that you would need. I'm a true expert in this field, have been doing this my whole life. Tahoe Wellness was founded in 2009, we've been there for five years. We've never had an incident, we've never had a police call. We're open today, and I invite anybody from the council or anybody from the city staff to our collective at any time. We can show you, we have 5,800 square feet, and show you exactly how we operate and some of the ways that a cooperative can be set up in your city and, you know, really be a benefit to the city. So I look forward to that. I'll leave my business card and our newsletter with the city clerk so that you guys have a contact.
Thank you very much.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government. And today, Sam is not, that's me, I'm Sam. Sam is not going to talk about the dysfunctional media that is insanely afraid and jealous of Reno's greatest watchdog and protector of freedom of speech in the history of Reno. No, Sam's not going to talk about the dysfunctional and pathetic Reno media, and Sam's not going to talk about those career politicians who are playing musical chairs bouncing from one politically position, political position to another with bloated salaries and perks that permeate throughout their careers. No, Sam is going to talk about his favorite subject today. Sam is going to talk about his favorite subject. Anybody want to guess? Sam is going to talk about Sam Denae. And Sam is going to start, nice chortle, Sam's going to start talking about Sam Denae by bringing up this term you hear now and then, gravitas. Gravitas. Well, guess what? What is gravitas? All you have to do is go to YouTube and Google "Sam Denae," and you will find the definition of gravitas. Gravitas is defined as savo- a person with savoia, fair sophistication, spunk, gumption, moxie, natural charisma, and of course, humility. That's Sam, right there on the button, ladies and gentlemen. That's Sam. Nice chortle over there, too. Everything I'm telling you is the truth. I'm trying to be a little bit sophisticated in my discussion here. Why is Sam, why is Sam the definition of gravitas? Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. Now, that's not a big deal all of its own. Sam graduated in the middle of his class. By the way, the mayor wanted to know why I'm dressed with this, kind of like, this dress the way I am. Normally, I'm relatively conservative.
No, I just thought you came from the gym.
The reason I'm dressed like this is I just came down back from my boxing exercise with my buddy, Tom Clark, retired Reno police legend. Anyway, now everybody knows why Sam's wearing a sweatshirt instead of a sports coat. At any rate, Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. Sam went on to fly fighters and bombers, B-52 bombers, F-4 Fanners, defending the nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of the borders. Sam then became an airline pilot for Pan Am. Sam has visited every important city in the world, and he sees what goes on, has seen what goes on in the world. After Sam's airline was blown out of business, Sam decided to become the Reno watchdog. And it wasn't overnight, it was what you would call death by a thousand cuts. Sam came down here on one issue, and after 4,500 public testimonies, Sam just recently received 55 distinguished filibuster cross awards. Each award represents 75 missions over Reno. And as I close out, if the Reno bureaucrats had listened to Sam, they would have not gotten their Schweinsteinkers stuck in the pickle slicer.
Thank you very much. All right, now we go to item A5, City Manager Reports.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't have any reports, but I know Councilman Delgado had some remarks he wanted to make to recognize staff.
Okay, Mr. Delgado.
Sure, appreciate it. Thank you, City Manager and Council. I just wanted to recognize the Reno Fire Department and the Reno Police Department on recently the work that they've done in arresting an arsonist in the Wells area, going out in the community, talking to the Wells community. They're very, feel much safer now, knowing that an arsonist has been captured and, in my understanding, has pleaded guilty, so that's great on your guys' behalf. Thank you so much. I also like to thank the RBD again on the recent capture of some taggers. I know that's been a big issue for the community at large, and so that's been great as well. So thank you very much for that. And lastly, earlier this year, the Wells, East of Wells and the NAB, lost a strong leader in the community, Christoph Mickelson, and the Parks and Rec and the Urban Forestry planted a tree of memorance of the gentleman, Christoph, and so I just wanted to thank the Parks and Rec and the Forestry for their work on that as well. So thank you.
Super, thank you. This time we'll go to item A6, Approval of the Agenda. Before we do that, item I1 has been pulled. Item I2 has been pulled. Item J1 has been pulled. Public comment was 12 noon. Proclamations none. Presentations, economic development, Grateful Gardens, Gino Scala. Public hearings at 12:15, we've done, or no, we have those. And then we have a public hearing tonight at 6 o'clock, Petro Solutions, item M1. Any other changes? Have motion in second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Mr. Manager, go back to item A5. You have an announcement.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmembers, just in regard to Mr. Lorton's comments on the performance bond issue that was raised, the performance bond for CurbSys was to guarantee the actual work that they performed installing the system, and that bond was supposed to be in place prior to work commencing, and unfortunately, that bond was not in place prior to them commencing the work to install the Curb System kiosk. No, that is correct, Councilman George. It would not have covered the lost revenue that resulted from the system. The performance bond was strictly for the installation of the system.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Manager, as a follow-up, since we're responding to this public comment, what about the signability provision? Because I, was there an signability? I didn't see that in the.
There was an signability in the contract, and it's my understanding, based on an email that I just received, that it was, that there was an amendment filed on that agreement to make that name change. Sure.
True.
So why didn't they correct the bond?
Item A7, Approval of the Minutes for October 23. Have second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B1, Cash Disbursements.
Moved to approve.
For October 13th, October 19th. Any disclosures? Okay.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve, second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Proclamations none. Presentations, economic development update. Gino Scala, owner of Grateful Gardens.
I have a PowerPoint. Thank you. Mayor Keshel, Council, thank you for having us here. We're grateful to be here today. This is my wife, Julie, and we own Grateful Gardens in the Midtown area, which is booming new, not really new, but booming development in Reno, and we're really excited to be there. And we appreciate the city and look forward to a long and prosperous relationship with you. We consider you a partner. Our purpose is to deliver amazing food and to do it with integrity, and we are having a great time working with local businesses in town, and we're committed and we have an inspiring team to make a difference and to do something a little different in Reno. Our consideration is your health, and it's our health. And as we move into the next 10 years of healthcare reform, we feel like wellness is a big part of that, and food service is an avenue of wellness, if you haven't considered it that before. These are a few of our team members. We're a very conservative group, as you can see. We try to keep things on the down-low and not make too much of a nuisance, but that was, that was a fun day for us.
You look good in the dark wig, Gino.
That's actually my prodigal son. When we say we care about our community, we mean it, and here are a few partners that we work with in the Reno area, and when I say a few, there is literally too big of a page to put on there, but Heritage Bank, the city, the Washoe County Health Department, and a series of support systems for us are all local business that are thriving, not only in the Midtown area but around us. Not a lot of people know, but we're actually a Nevada farmer, and Mayor Keshel's actually visited the greenhouse there, and although it be small, we can produce in the winter about 100 pounds of tomatoes a week. And that was a model set up for a university project that we did to explore a greenhouse growing. growing in the Nevada area. We are blessed with a lot of sun, and as you hear, different opportunities to work with growers across the country, I'd urge you to work with, or contact me if you have any questions. We're becoming experts in this field, and it's fun. Go ahead. We're also a producer or a manufacturer. A little bit different than a lot of restaurateurs, we've decided to take on a presence in other markets. So, in the retail trade, there's a brand of soup called Gino the Soup Man, and we started at the Great Basin Community Food Co-op, and we love those people over there. They're amazing, they've done some great things. You've seen what they've done on Court Street, and I appreciate the things that you've done to support them. They were our first customer and launched us into the Whole Foods market. We're their number one frozen private brand, and I'm not telling you that to be boastful or to really any other reason than this, that locally made, locally grown products can thrive in the marketplace with some due diligence and some integrity. Go ahead. Thank you. You can always count on us having organic produce. Keep, keep flipping through that. We use a lot of local stuff, too. A lot of local producers, like Lost City Farms right down the street from here, Urban Roots, they're producing a lot of really great edible food. That's not necessarily certified organic because the certifications are so pricey. However, they're not using pesticides. And when you circulate food qualities and food manufacturing and growing and even fisheries, if we decided to do aquaponics here, you can really impact a community in a different way. And, and we're in a very micro example supporting that and doing it. Go ahead. I wanted to tease you a little bit because I didn't realize how this meeting was structured, and I can imagine that you must be hungry by now, so we're right down the street. That was the Gino's Raw Power Bowl, that's a wild Mexican shrimp. That's the bomb salad, and I had to throw this one in for you, Bob. That's the Liege Waffle, which is made by another local Reno company called Reno Envy. And they're an up and coming company, they do a Belgium recipe, they're really cool, and, and we really enjoy working with them. One of the, actually, that's, that's really it. Thank you and have a great full day. Before I end, oh, I'm out of time. I just want to urge the council, what's happening in Midtown is excellent, and, and there's so many positive things, what the Carters are doing, and what's going on with other restaurateurs and, and, and other shops, polyester, I mean, I can go on down the list, not to leave anybody out, but parking is definitely an, an issue there. And if there's anything we can do to support a meeting or ideas or anything in regards to the parking, we would sure be willing to do that, and we, and we encourage you to, to look at those, I'm, I'm sure you are, and, and ask questions. So, thank you very much and have a beautiful day.
Gino, before you walk away.
Yes, sir.
Would you tell everybody how many new stores you just signed a contract to go into in California and everything after certain people tasted your soups and, and things like that?
Sure, sure. The, the Whole Foods market in Reno was pretty blown away by our sales, and we're, like I said, the number one private frozen brand in their freezer. So, we just recently sent our product over the hill, 1,374 courts went to California, and a Reno company is in 12 new Whole Foods ranging from Santa Rosa down to the Santa Cruz marketplace. And that's supposed to expand into 30 in March. So, kudos to Reno. A lot of the produce grown at Nevada Fresh Pack is in those soups, so, and sold through the co-op, so it's very cool.
Kudos to you and you for letting him participate with you. And, but, but, you know, this is a young person, couple that came in, started doing things, expanded to sign up all of these stores with Whole Foods and everything else. It just shows what entrepreneurship is, and y'all have done a great job, and thank you for being part of our community.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to the consent agenda. Any items you want to pull for discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to pull E-3 and E-7, please.
E-3 and E-7. Any others to pull? All right, motion made and second. All in favor say aye. Whoops, wait a minute, I do have a speaker. Mr. Eddie Lorton.
Mr. Koschel, City Council, Eddie Lorton for the record. On E-6, I had a question there for the possible action approval of change order, number one, forgot my reading glasses, sorry, to the contract with Q and D Construction. So, I see that we're going to extend the contract, but it doesn't have a dollar amount. And shouldn't there be a dollar amount in there, or it's just the same price and it's extended, or what are we doing?
My under, my interpretation of that is it's a reimbursement basis on fees paid by contractors who are cutting into our streets on behalf of, you know, permittees, and, and that's how I read that. Can we have a clarification from staff on that?
To the microphone, please.
Identify yourself for the record.
Karykowski, City Reno Public Works. The contract amount stays the same. It does not change. It was $926,000. The only thing that changes is the, the timeframe. So, the contractor will allow, would allow the contractor another year to perform the work that's, that was already bid.
Same amount.
For the same amount of money.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, it's reimbursement based, right? It's all a flow-through?
Yes.
And the amounts had just not to exceed?
Yeah. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have a motion and a second on the other items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E-3, Ms. Brackus.
Okay. Question for staff on E-3. We're spending a lot of money over at the plant to a lot of different providers. It's timely because I'm hearing a lot about our automatic sewer rate increase in the last week. How are all these contractors selected and, and why, do we have an on-call list? Have we done an RFQ? Are we doing through a rotational list? And what's, and what's the thinking on all the work on the plant that's being done to kind of spread it out rather than have one master contractor do all the work that's, which is millions? But I'm just trying to understand how we're going about on the procurement of this.
Good afternoon. My name's Terri Svetich, Engineering Manager with Public Works. And what we do is put out a statement of qualifications request, so that will allow engineering firms to respond to this SOQ request. And we have, have broken it into different categories. So, we are working off a list that was specific to wastewater, so that we are able to go in, look at the firms, and, and look at their qualifications, and just move from consultant to consultant so that we are spreading the work around. We do evaluate whether or not they are appropriate for this particular application, because certainly with wastewater, there's a lot of different elements that transpire out there at the treatment plant. So, we work with the consultant and really look at the scope of work that is brought forward to make sure that it covers all the bases that are needed, and scrutinize it quite closely before we come, come down to actually developing a consultant agreement.
But I guess for any discrete task of work, are you getting multiple bids? That's my question. Because I, I do see that the scopes are always written by the consultant, and I'm just, which I, I understand is fine, they're probably responding to some broader scope, but are you getting multiple price bids? And I know under the procurement, you don't have to go with lowest bid on professional services, but just, you know, how's cost controlled?
Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney. You cannot bid professional services, engineering, land surveyor contracts, it is strictly prohibited by NRS 625. So, you have to select a consultant on the basis of qualifications. Once you select the consultant, they prepare the scope, then at that point in time, you can negotiate the dollar amount, but you cannot bid such as consultant agreement.
Can, you can RFQ it, right?
Yes, you could RFQ it, but again, it would be based on solely qualification for the selection process, which is what they do in their, their process where they create their consultant lists.
Okay, and, and out at the plant, this Tomworth, are you working this in conjunction with Sparks? And they're involved in the selection also?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item D-7, Ms. Brackus.
Yes, Mr. Flansburgh. What is a skid-mounted DI spray system, and what's it used for?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. The skid-mounted system that you're looking at there, those are slide-in tanks for the brine application. So, those are used in our salt and, or ice, snow and ice control. So, those go out ahead of a storm when we anticipate a storm coming in. We can go ahead and spray brine on the roads. When it actually starts to snow, that actually creates a bond breaker between the snow and the road, and it makes it much easier for us to then plow the roads off when we have that. If we don't, don't end up putting that down, we end up getting that bond between the road and the ice, and, and once you get to that, it's virtually impossible to get through till it actually starts to melt.
Are these on the plows, or are they on a separate?
These actually slide into the trucks that have plows on them.
Okay, okay. My next question is in the background section of this report. It discussed that in September of 2010, we had a $3 million, $3 million one CMAC grant program. That's congestion mitigation air quality funds. Those are federal dollars that flow through probably from NDOT, but certainly through RTC. And, you know, we're three years into this program, and I, I didn't know it was a program. I thought it was a one-time. Can you explain what's the CMAC and how much money we have left in that?
Certainly. So, the congestion mitigation air quality is a set of funds for looking at things that you can do to improve air quality in, in the region. And so, some of those, some of those can be projects, transportation to improve capacity in certain areas so that you're not having as much stopping, you know, the, the exhaust from vehicles, those kind of things. The other item that we look at is in snow removal, when you put out the sand and salt, the breakdown of those can contribute to a, a bad air quality situation. So, this, there are two things, two primary items that we received on this. One was in regards to our sweeping operation, and so, part of that grant went towards the purchase of several sweepers that meet air quality standards in terms of their filtration. The other part was for our actual snow and ice control. This being the brine system allowed us to put a brine tank out at the corporation yard to create the brine, and then the purchase of several tanks to actually use to apply the brine, so that we do not have to put out as much sand in a salt-sand-spreading operation.
Is this the end of this 3.1? Because three years to sit around with federal money is pretty long.
Yeah, this is, this is towards the end. We've already purchased several sweepers. That was probably the, the largest purchase we have. In fact, I want to say that we are looking at the end of, into this calendar year, so December 31st is kind of the end of the acquisition period of, of everything for this grant.
Okay. Because my, you know, what I'm getting at is, a couple months ago, we had a discussion up here looking at enhancement projects. There was discussion, priorities, number of people came up and wanted to spend some money on the Tricky River Bike Path, which is, you know, inadequate for ADA, and there's safety concerns out there. That would be an eligible CMAC program item, I understand.
Perhaps. I'd have to look, do more research in that. But this will, this will finalize the grant that was put in several years ago that had, you know, different years for purchases for Washoe County, City of Sparks, City of Reno, different items for our operations.
So, it's a regional CMAC grant?
Correct.
Okay, and it's done? No more money?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion for approval and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Council, would you consider item L-5, which is a request for a text amendment and allowing staff the two hours to be able to produce that? I just discovered that the party that would be involved in attempting to put in an indoor tennis court in that location is here. Rather than making him sit through the whole meeting, would you like to handle L-5? Should be a quick, okay? And I just described what it is. We're actually in non-conformance, the, our language, our code, with the counties. It's deeded property for recreational use, and we have it as residential, so we need to clean that up so that he can move forward with a special use permit to his attempt, our desires, to put in indoor tennis courts. So, staff needs time to be able to work on that.
Well, all motion. I'm happy to help out with making our code better. Thank you, Ms. Adrip, for bringing this forward.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Kurt, you don't have to sit through the meeting. All right, we'll move to the public hearings. Madam Secretary, F-1.
Yes, Madam Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
This is Bill Number 6876, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning. One, rezoning approximately 6,000 square feet of a 26,528-square-foot parcel from MF-30MH, multi-family residential, 30 units per acre, mobile home overlay, to PF, public facility, and two, remove the MH overlay from the entire parcel together with other matters property, properly relating thereto.
I did.
Yeah, I think before we move to refer, I think I need to move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission first. Is that correct?
I'm assuming so.
I'll move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then I'll move to refer the bill.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F-2, Madam Secretary.
Yes, Madam Mayor, for the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
This is, this is Bill Number 6877, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code, Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.02, General Provisions to Add Section 18.02.114, entitled Stay on the Acceptance of Land Use Applications Related to Medical Marijuana Establishments Within the Land Use Jurisdiction of the City of Reno, Together with Other Matters Properly Relating thereto.
Can we get a report from staff on this? Staff?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. This is just bringing forward the ordinance that City Council directed us to bring forward to establish the stay on the acceptance of land use applications related to medical marijuana.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I ask a question of staff? Yeah, please. What is a stay?
There you go.
A stay would be, so a moratorium, I'm going to go back to moratorium. A moratorium is when you establish a, a period of time to accomplish whatever you're trying to accomplish on a project. A stay is just where you are not accepting the applications in this case indefinitely until council comes back to, to make an, an action on it formally and, and permanently.
That sounds a little vague. Is there a definition incorporated into RMC with a stay, or is stay defined anywhere in RMC in Title 18 or elsewhere?
I don't believe it's in RMC, no.
You know, I know what a moratorium is. I don't know if it's defined in RMC, but I know it's something that's been upheld by the United States Supreme Court, actually, suspending regulations you have in place for a period of study. And there's very good, strong case law in Nevada on moratorium. But it's suspending regulations you have in place. So, I would agree that it's not appropriate for a moratorium, but a stay, having this undefined activity that is, has no precedence elsewhere in RMC, seems a little blurry to me.
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. A stay is generally, you know, in a legal context, that's where, you know, either a court or a governing body won't proceed down, down the path any further until something happens. And so, that's essentially what's happening now, at least the way it's kind of put in place right now, that where the law is on a federal level and where we are kind of on a state level, the notion is, is that we're not proceeding further until we get some additional clarification from the state, so.
I'm uncomfortable using that term, that I, I'm sure when you get into court and when you're with judges, has some meaning, but I don't see that it has any meaning in RMC. I don't see that it has any meaning that I've ever seen in NRS, and it doesn't come into our code with a definition. So, it makes me a little uncomfortable that we're doing something we're not sure. And I guess my other question is, say, we're, we're trying to prevent applications from coming in, but what if applications are brought in? Do they go into a queue? Is that what a stay could be interpreted as, is hey, this was Is that what a stay could be interpreted as, is, hey, this was the first one we kicked back, so this would have precedence? Is that?
I defer to staff on that, but essentially, we're not, I mean, based upon the direction of City Council, there is no...
We aren't accepting applications.
Yeah, we're not accepting applications. So there is no queue, there is no line, there's just no acceptance to begin with.
Well, there's a lot of activities we're not accepting applications for. Prostitution is illegal within the City of Reno, and we don't have a stay on that. I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable in this muddy waters that you mentioned because the federal government and the states are acting in kind of crosshairs, and cities are stuck down, you know, doing what we're trying to do, that we're even further helping to muddy the water. I argued before, when I opposed this initiation, that we just do nothing, not do anything. And I'm particularly concerned that, you know, as I mentioned before, we're acting in a separate and distinct way from other jurisdictions that have acted on this. And then finally, I'm concerned that, you know, this is a constitutional right that the state of Nevada people have given themselves, and that if this stay, whatever it's interpreted at some point to be, ends up being permanent, then we are subject to a tax that we have deprived someone of their constitutional rights. So can you elaborate upon that?
I really don't have much to say. I mean, that's a statement. I mean, I don't really have anything to say.
Mr. Mayor, this was put together by direction from this council to bring back to us, and I'm going to make the motion to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
But before we take the motion, we do have public comment. Cody Bass?
I'll second that, so you can do the public comment.
Good afternoon, Counsel. This is Cody Bass, Executive Director of Tahoe Wellness Cooperative. I would point out a few things, and I agree with Councilmember Breckus, that we, you know, you as the council should do nothing at this point. A stay is not defined. But beyond that, the state has not and will not be allowing applications. The soonest date that they will allow them is in April, I believe April 1st, and that will most likely get pushed off. So there is no fear of anything really taking place, and you have plenty of time between now and April to either look at a regulatory process. I can point out a couple of benefits that will really take place once a cooperative is in your community. With like South Lake Tahoe, where we really can prevent diversion. If our medicine is found in the schools, we work closely with the police department to track back where that medicine comes from. If it's in our packaging and it's found in the high school, we track every single sale to the patient of where it goes. So let's say a parent was a member of ours, or there was some kind of diversion happening. We work very closely with the city. We have full transparency into our books. We, you know, it really brings something that is existing in your community and is in your city, kind of out of the shadows and into a transparent, beneficial thing for the community. I really think that if you guys come to South Lake Tahoe and look at what we have created there, you will find that it is something that is very beneficial and that I think that you guys would want to see in the community. Because if you do place a ban on it, really what you're doing is you're just supporting a criminal element. The criminal element does exist. It's not, it's not something that we're going to deny. I think your Chief of Police would agree with you that cannabis is being sold in your community regardless. So why not bring it into a regulatory model that, you know, you would have a lot more control and have a lot more insight into what is happening? It could also provide tax money to the city, which, you know, is something that hasn't hammered out in the state level yet, but is being taken a look at. So I think there's many positive elements that are there, and that as you go, you know, what we did in South Lake Tahoe is the council made a, you know, formed a committee with the three existing at the time. Now we're the only existing, but at the time, there was three of us. And we kind of came together with the Chief of Police and the City Attorney and the zoning administrators, and we wrote a regulatory model, which is a 26-page ordinance that the city then passed, had a two-phase application. So I, you know, again, would volunteer my time to help you guys in any part of that, and so.
We're not passing a ban on this. We're just asking the state, no applications. I bet I've had 15 calls from people wanting to apply and do things, and we're putting this off until the state comes with their regulation. We're not saying we're banning this or doing anything else. We're very positive about looking at it.
Awesome. Okay, well, and again, I am open for any kind of correspondence or any type of help I could offer.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, and I would, I would offer to that, that, yeah, as I, as I read this today, this is in no way today an action of prohibition of anything nor approval of anything. It's simply us hitting the pause button. And I disagree with Councilmember Breckus that stay is not the right avenue in which to pursue this. Moratorium tends, puts a definitive date, and since we don't have a defined period of when the state is going to act, to put that deadline on there could be premature. So a stay, in essence, lets us push the pause button, and that's all today's action.
Does it have to be one or the other, is what I wonder? I mean...
More time, right?
Yeah, I mean...
I would turn to staff for that because they have requested some clarity.
One last recommendation, just from me. I mean, if you guys were to pass a stay, maybe at the same time, consider forming a committee to start looking at the regulatory process and to start meeting about that regulatory process.
We've got our staff already in that process. They're in the process with the state as far as following that process, and we've asked them to bring updates back to us, and as the state regulations get put in place, to be back in front of us with some recommendations.
Right. And I would just say that, you know, having a few experts from the industry, people that have been involved in cannabis, part of that committee and part of that regulated process would make it a due, you know, due diligence.
Well, and I'm glad you brought this up. You're real close, because I've had people that have volunteered out of San Diego, Los Angeles, Arizona, Colorado, Washington, have all volunteered to come down and participate, helping write guidelines and stuff. So we do appreciate your input.
Awesome. And again, I invite any of you guys, we're literally a mile from the state line, just in South Lake Tahoe, right on Highway 50. So you've got my information. Anytime any of you would like to walk through, please let us know.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, I'm advocating, and I have, that we do nothing. I think, you know, we've got 17 counties in Nevada and, how many cities? 19? 22? And I think one has taken action so far. So I'm advocating a no action. That's just to make clear why I won't be supporting this.
Okay. I have a motion and second on the floor.
One more public comment. Sam Diney.
Mr. Diney.
I have a request to speak.
She just came up, come to speak, Mr. Diney. I called you.
Did anybody here call me? I guess I'm going, whatever.
It's age, Mr. Diney. Don't worry about it.
I'm not worried about your age, Mr. Mayor. Sam Diney, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and I spoke on this. I'll be very brief because you covered most of what I was going to say. But I spoke on this when it was on the agenda a couple of months ago, and I kind of split the baby. And before I go any further, this discussion right here is going, has made my point. The open meeting law demands that agenda items be written so that the average citizen will understand them. And if you listen to this discussion we've had right now, even the City Council, some of the City Council did not understand what that said. Stay, for ladies, people out there, stay, it says, they're going to create or vote on a stay on land use applications for medical marijuana establishment. Why didn't you just say, we're not going to accept medical marijuana licenses? And I think everybody would understand that. We're not going to accept the licenses for a period of time. And the thing I have against the word stay, which I said the last time, although you didn't use the word stay, which, for those who missed the first part, it means they're not going to do anything. You're just going to sit there and limbo for a period of time, and in this case, an indefinite, unknown period of time. And what I have against this is that you accept this stay, it's put over there in the box, and unless citizens come forward on their own volition and say, what happened? Where is it? Like Eddie Lorton did with the parking meter thing, it's just going to sit over there until somebody comes forward. Of course, you know Sam will probably be forward with it in a couple of months, but he's got so many things on his plate right now, he doesn't have time to get into this marijuana thing. At any rate, I think you have to, you should put a date limitation on that thing. If nothing else, that it will come back here within, I would say, no longer, no more than three months, that it would be back before the council to discuss against, because the mayor's shaking his head. This is a big issue. By the way, I don't partake of the mooch-a-ma-con or the marijuana. I prefer tequila as my quote-unquote drug of choice, always with a designated driver, though. At any rate, I, my recommendation is that you do not put a stay on this, that you just put, you just put it in abeyance, or don't agree, or do not allow licensing applications for a period of three months, and then have it come back forward, because who knows what is going to happen in the meantime? Did everybody understand what I just said?
No, you know, I really didn't.
But I do have a question for staff. What is the process to lift this stay? Is this a process, is this detrimental in us trying to move forward?
It would be the same process as it is to put it in. So you would just initiate to bring it back, and we would do another amendment.
Could we ask for it not to come back until April or till after the state had our last meeting? Did it not come back until the state had passed their guidelines?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, for the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. As you just stated, the direction from the council at the time when you considered this item and gave the direction to make this text amendment and as well as amendments to our business license ordinances, was that staff come back with a report no later than your second meeting in April or sooner, if in fact the state was complete with their regulatory process. I would point out that it's important to note that until such time as the state has completed that regulatory process and is able to issue certificates to the operators of these medical marijuana establishments, we would not have the ability to issue a business license, even if that were the desire of the council to do so. So what we're looking to do, as Councilwoman Jarden said, is timeout, put a pause, wait until the state finishes that regulatory process, analyze those regulations, see if in fact some of the measures that the proprietor described before for tracking those things is indeed in compliance with the Department, Federal Department of Justice's direction on making sure that there's a strong regulatory place and process. And once we've had a chance to evaluate that, see if there are additional measures that this council feels would be prudent for these operators to begin business in our community. If the state has gotten it right, then we'll move forward, but we, at your direction, will be back before you, no later than your second meeting in April.
And the court system has used the stay system on many occasions with court cases and stuff.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I wanted to add to your discussion that a dictionary definition of stay includes to pause, to stop going forward. So a reasonable interpretation using dictionary in interpreting the ordinance would have the same result as a legal interpretation.
And we've seen the court system use that quite often. All right, I have a motion, second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries 6-1. All right, now we'll go to item G1, Ordinance Introduction, Adoptions.
This is ordinance Number 6309, an ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08.201, entitled Permitted Uses by Base Zoned District, and Section 18.08.405, Regional Center and Transit Corridor Overlay Districts, together with other matters properly relating thereto, establishing the midtown zoning districts and development and land use standards for each district.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H, Resolutions. Item H1.
Resolution Number 7917, Resolution Declaring Intention to Lease/Purchase at the Current Appraised Value, the City of Reno's Interest in Certain Real Property Located at 450 Sinclair Street, Reno, Nevada, to the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada Reno, and to provide notice to the public to attend the public meeting of the City Council on November 20, 2013, to provide any objections to such transfer as required by NRS 277.050, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mr. Thomas, you got something?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Just here to answer any questions you might have about this and to remind you that this is simply the resolution that starts the process to be able to consummate this lease/purchase agreement. And I did want to point out that both Heidi Ganzer and Troy Miller from the University of Nevada are here, if you have any questions about their intended use of the building. So with that, all in my presentation.
Any discussion, questions? You want to ask anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I think, first of all, I'd make a motion, but I would very much like to hear, I think the public would appreciate hearing...
What they're going to do?
What they're going to do and the commitment that was.
All right, I have a second. I have a second. Now we'll have a little discussion about this. I think this is the most fantastic thing that's happened in a long time with the university bringing them into our community downtown and trying to get married again and do things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Heidi Ganzer, Executive Director of External Affairs for the University of Nevada Reno. We're very pleased to be here today. We've been working really hard with the city, especially over the last year, to connect to town, to connect to industry. We've been working on the Smarter Cities and Smarter Regions Initiative, and being able to purchase this building will be a concrete example of our really moving downtown so that we can more closely work with business. In this process, we're here today, but we also will have to go to the Board of Regents if you decide to approve it. Some of the things that we intend to do is, the College of Business has some outreach programs that they want to place downtown, especially around development services, business development services, and then also the College of Engineering. We're in the process of developing an innovation center around advanced manufacturing and autonomous systems, which is partially being funded through the Knowledge Fund, which was, which are dollars from the state of Nevada. And with that, we would be locating some faculty members. We expect students to be downtown working on projects. We expect industry to be able to collaborate and to meet. We believe that we're going to be able to connect with the Discovery Museum. We've already reached out to them so that we can have some tours, potentially have some robotics and robotics-type labs for students to be able to observe. We think we're going to have a couple of community rooms so that we can have meetings there. So it's really a great way for us to reach into downtown and make the university even more accessible to industry. And as all of you know, sometimes when you go up to the university, it's tough to park. So just being located at the edge of downtown, midtown, and having abundant parking, and having some of our faculty and our students there as part of our campus will be really exciting for us.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I'm tickled to death that you're coming because it's one big step starting. But you know, one thing that I have to talk to you and the President about, this is a university town, not a college town. Junior colleges for college towns. So I take that into consideration. I, you know, our smartest city study showed universities as where the tech companies and the other companies want to come, and I sure hope you'll reconsider.
Well, thank you. And I think we're on the same page. I mean, we really, we recognize the university can be part of developing our economy here, and we appreciate the support of the city and all the council members and Mr. Mayor on this.
All right.
I had a couple of questions. How long has this property been vacant, essentially vacant?
About a year. About two years.
For the record, again, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. It has not really been technically vacant since we left, but we have a skeleton crew of probably four or five code enforcement officers in the building. We left the, or took the Community Development Department out there probably about a year ago. So the essential functions were removed about a year ago with the skeleton crew just to keep the building alive.
And the annual operations to keep the lights on were, are what, 64,000? Is that what I read?
It was in here.
Is that...
It's about 64,000 a year just to maintain the building, right?
Okay, so to maintain an essentially empty building. I think, I love this. I think this furthers the fact that we, you know, as the mayor said, it's not just a town with a university in it, but a university town. But I also give a shout-out to Truckee Meadows Community College, because I do think we're a college. I'm a proud TMCC graduate, so shout-out to the college as well.
I'm not putting anything down on the community college. I love the community college. I just think that it's a university town.
I would agree with that. I have a question about the bonds. I don't know who's coming up here.
Come on, Chisley.
I'll answer it. For the record, John Shipman, if it's tough, Robert's going to answer it.
Can you just explain to me the restrictions on sales when, with regards to the energy bonds that are attached to this property?
Yeah, in general, and then Robert can correct me if I'm wrong. But so, a couple of years back, we did this huge energy bond retrofit across the city. A whole number of projects were financed. The money that we would gather from energy savings was going to pay off the bonds. These improvements were put into all these places with the energy savings paying for those facilities. As part of that agreement, it's an installment purchase agreement, it counts as debt. As part of that agreement, we can't prepay that bond. You have a penalty, and so like with, most of our bonds are structured so that, you You have a penalty and so like with, most of our bonds are structured so that, you know, within, you know, five years, 10 years, whatever, you can prepay or defees a portion of it. We didn't have that option with this bond. We have to essentially own and maintain that facility for the duration of the bond, and that's tied to the lease term. So I believe it's 13 years is the lease term here. So we have structured payments over those 13 years. At the end of that 13-year period, that's the amortization for that bond. And so then the facilities, the improvements revert to the property and get, that's at the point that the, and she has the ability to exercise her option and purchase it for a dollar at that point in time. Does that help or is that?
It does. I just didn't understand how those restrictions.
And we have that, just so council's aware, if you haven't already been aware, there's a number of buildings throughout the city, you know, like the Corp Yard and McKinley, where we have that as a challenge if we were to ever surplus this property. And we're looking at selling assets because we just don't have the ability without going to the bank and paying a big penalty to sell that.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question on this? That raises a question for me. You know, it's, we've got debt on this building and that obviously reduces the worth and the value we're getting for it. But I understand that some of these energy bonds have been impacted by sequestration. And in terms of the buy-down that the federal government was giving, some of that has been taken away. And I wonder, and I understand there's projections that some of that buy-down, you know, whatever way the federal budget goes, could even further be decreased. So what we're calling our payment now, if some action goes on the federal government, could even escalate because we're paying a higher interest rate. They're buying down the interest rate. Do you anticipate that? And maybe we should have some sort of clawback relationship because we're trying to, you know, be made whole on our debt here if, you know, if our interest payments go up?
I'd refer that to bond counselor, to our financial advisor, but I don't believe, I think you're talking about a different program. This is more, you know, the facilities were put into the building, they're energy-saving facilities, they generate savings. It's that savings that is used to pay down the debt. Because it's for a tax-exempt entity, I don't believe it amounts to like, we've seen in other scenarios where you have a taxable bond that you're talking about, and then the feds come in and they give you a percentage to pay down that may be affected by sequestration so that you could sell it and you get a tax-exempt rate. But I don't believe these are it. And I could be wrong, and I'd refer, you know, Robert could correct me.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director, for the record. The sequestration did affect the bonds, but it was a very small, minor amount. It was, you know, and I actually don't remember the amount. It was less than about $10,000. It is a paydown of the interest rate and it is a savings, but it is something we should be aware of as we go forward and do any future bonding.
So what, but what if, worst case scenario, and 10,000 just on this sub-tranche of this bond or the whole?
I can't remember how much it was. It was very minor at the time, and we, so we didn't even, we were pretty pleased with how minor the impact was.
For the record, Maureen McKissick, the bonds that Robert's referring to with the Recovery Zone Economic Development Bonds, which came to us through the Recovery Act.
Yes, I know.
We used approximately 9.5 million of our overall authorization as part of the financing for all of the retrofits. So I don't know specifically how much applied to the annex, but that was the entire pot.
Well, Mr. Chisel said it was maybe 1.14 was to the annex or so.
As far as, one, Robert Chisel again, approximately 1.4 million dollars is the outstanding equipment that is, was placed in the Sinclair Building as part of this bond issuance, as part of the energy savings. So there's about 1.4 million dollars worth of equipment that was placed in there.
I mean, you know, essentially, depending on what happens to the federal government, we have a fluctuating bond, right?
It's a fixed rate, interest rate, but it is based on, there is interest savings that we get reimbursed for.
Yes. And worst-case scenario, you know, you said 10,000 off of 9 million, but could it go up to, you know, 500,000 of 9 million over the life of this bond that we have to pay it back?
I can't tell you what the federal government will or will not do, but at this time, it does not seem likely that it will be an impact on us.
Okay.
All right. I have a motion and second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
Hi, Eric Raiden with Marmont Properties. Just from our perspective as entrepreneurs in Midtown, we think that the, this UNR deal is an absolute boon for Midtown and absolute boon for Downtown. We've seen this in other cities, using Fort Worth and Los Angeles as proxies. Texas Christian University, University of Southern California, been absolutely instrumental in revitalizing and rehabilitating their respective downtowns. And it's not just, you know, school spirit, but it is literally a physical connection between the university and the downtown region and by extension, Midtown. We think that this is an absolutely critical and absolutely necessary first step in the long-term sustainable revitalization of Downtown and Midtown. So I think everybody on this council and the mayor should be, and the university leadership should be commended for showing some true grit and some vision in getting this deal done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time you want to speak, make sure you fill out a card ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, and you can put a University of Nevada sign on there. It'd really be nice, too.
We're planning to put a couple of big ins on there, at least one big in. You'll know where they're.
I need an explanation of what it is. They might not know what that in is. So when I'm driving to other people around town, they say, oh, there's a University of Nevada.
University of Nevada. Thank you very much for the support.
Thank you. Oh, Heidi's going to get me. I can tell already. All right, now we'll go to, wait a minute. We're now to item I1 that has been pulled. Item I2 has been pulled. Item J1, Community Development, that's been pulled. Item J2, Discussion and Approval of a Process to Evaluate the Performance of the City Manager. I thought we got to eat you alive in public. Is that not it?
No, you still do.
Oh, okay.
For the record, Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager. At the June 2013 meeting, this council gave direction to council members Breckus and Jardon to work with staff to create a process to evaluate the city manager. And pursuant to NRS 241.031, the performance review of the executive officer of a public agency needs to be conducted pursuant to an open public meeting. The performance evaluation process is really a planning process. It's an opportunity to evaluate and review accomplishments, to provide feedback, to establish goals and objectives, and to outline responsibilities. And with the assistance of council member Breckus and Jardon, we have constructed a process that invites the city council, members of the executive team, department heads that report directly to the city manager, to provide feedback. Each raider, with the exception of the city council, will provide their feedback through an anonymous survey tool, and the results will be tabulated by the Human Resources Director. And those will be presented to the council in a public meeting. And at that public meeting, members of the city council will also have an opportunity, using the same evaluation form, to present their comments to the city manager on his or her performance. And as part of this process, the city manager will also complete a self-evaluation. And the evaluation itself reviews performance in the areas of communication, innovation, leadership, management, as well as interpersonal skills and relationships. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Really not much difference in what we've been doing in the past.
Only that it's documented, yes.
Documented.
I just have one question, and these forms were compiled from what the City of Sparks and Washoe County, it was a compilation of some different parts of them. In asking the department heads and the executive team in their review of Andrew, how do you anticipate receiving the completed evaluation forms?
They will be submitted through an anonymous survey program, such as Survey Monkey Online, something like that.
Okay.
Do they have to sign them? Or are they confidential?
No, they're anonymous, submitted anonymously.
That was, that was why I asked that, because obviously if it was, if they were handwriting something, there could, you know, be some tieback to who completed them. But no, I appreciate this. I think the, some of the details, comments, as I've stated many times, comments to me are more valuable than anything else. They're very constructive and helpful. And the fact that Andrew can set his own goals that are probably tied to our strategic goals, and each year refer back to those informationally is very helpful.
And Mr. Mayor, I thank the two councilwomen for participating in this. It is a subtle change, but I think an important one. And I would emphasize that the only thing that is anonymous, the only thing that is anonymous, is the employee, the direct reports. Nothing has changed in terms of the council's evaluation. By state law, we're required to make every comment public and all deliberations public, and we will continue to do that. But I really appreciate that we're encouraging the direct reports to have input as well and for the manager to be able to do his self-analysis.
Be constructive, woman. Motion to approve the staff report. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Board and Commission appointment, appointment of a member of the permanent City of Reno Charter Committee. Chair'll entertain a motion.
Oscar's the only one that was left.
I move to appoint Ruth Gaw for Ward Three.
I thought he was appointing himself, the way I read it. Okay. Who are you appointing?
Ruth Gaw.
Okay. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of Mayor and Council Adams for future agenda?
I have one, Mr.
Oh, I did skip one. I did skip one. Item J3, Bi-Local Marketplace, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Alexis Hill, Special Events Program Manager, for the record. On November 23rd and November 24th, the City of Reno will be partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to hold the Second Annual Bi-Local Marketplace. Staff is very excited to partner with the Chamber of Commerce for our second annual event, and the chamber will be coming up shortly to show you how they will be expanding the event. To give you a little background on the success of our first inaugural event, I'd like to introduce Barbara DiCiano from OCC-E.
Good afternoon. For the record, Barbara DiCiano, OCC-E. The annual Bi-Local Marketplace is an event that is centered on supporting council's priorities to support a sustainable and vibrant economy. Last year's event, which was also held at the National Automobile Museum, was organized and managed by a small group of very dedicated city staff members. We had over 110 local businesses and nonprofits selling their goods and services, and many more on a waiting list for future year events. We had more than 2,000 visitors to the Automobile Museum to do their holiday shopping and really reacquaint themselves with the treasures at the Automobile Museum. It was definitely a win-win for everyone involved. Businesses and shoppers were able to present and purchase unique products. The National Automobile Museum was able to showcase their facility to a wide range of visitors, and the Food Bank of Northern Nevada was able to benefit from the day's canned food event. So it was really a great inaugural event and one that I am very proud to be a part of. Thank you.
And of course, the city is still remaining involved with the event, even with our great partnership with the chamber, with all of our social media outlets, newsletters, and working with our media partners through TV and radio to highlight the event and the bigger picture of a sustainable and vibrant economy that the City of Reno is trying to push to our community. And I'd like to introduce Kristi Quatro, the Director of Marketing and Communications for the chamber, so she can let you know a sneak peek of 2013's event. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Mr. Mayor, again, my name is Kristi Quatro with the Chamber of Commerce, and I can't tell you how thrilled we are to be a partner in this event. I think that we have some good relationships and a good base to really outreach to everybody about what's going on this year. Last year's event, from what I heard, was phenomenal, and this year, we're hoping to take it a step further with the help of my team and our membership. We're looking to extend it into a two-day event this year, so it'll take place on both Saturday and Sunday. We've also leveraged some really good partnerships with media, specifically Lotus Radio has come on board. They are donating 160 commercials to go ahead and promote the event. We're also working with Channel Four and Channel Two, who are also helping us with PSAs. On top of that, I have a membership database of over 4,700 that we're emailing blasts weekly to. We've leveraged our relationships with the Reno Gazette Journal, the Northern Nevada Business Weekly, who have also helped to promote this event. I believe we also have a greater base of volunteers through our ambassador programs with the chamber, as well as just our staff that can dedicate time to this fantastic event. I believe on Friday, we're going to go ahead and do the grassroots campaign of going door-to-door through the Midtown District, hit up some businesses on the south end of Reno, go into Sparks a little deeper, and then also reach out to other chambers, specifically in Carson City, to see if they'd like to come on in, and the bi-local being Northern Nevada and not just encompassing Reno this year. So as far as the expansion, I think that we're able to reach out, and this is a perfect fit for what the chamber is trying to accomplish, and that is give more face time to some of the smaller businesses, our local businesses, and just keeping our money local, letting people come shop locally instead of going over the hill to shop, and keep our money where it belongs, and that's here. So currently, we have 51 vendors already signed up, and I'm hoping that by the end of this week, going door-to-door on Friday, that we should have at least 10 to 15 more. We've solidified a database of local businesses that we are reaching out to this week. We had a healthcare forum today, so we're a little, we're a little behind the eight ball this week, but by Friday, we should be in full force. And like I said, we're just really, really lucky to be able to partner with a lot of different local media outlets and community resources that we already have set in place with the chamber. So I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor, this is just really exciting, and I have to thank the council. You remember that last year, actually the year before, when I brought the idea to you, it just, it took us a while to get going, and you made light of the hard work and dedication that you, the staff members, this very small team, last year on the inaugural year, had to put into it. I mean, it was just extremely successful, and we are so excited that you guys have partnered with us and have taken this on because we're really not in the event business.
Correct.
And you're just doing an incredible job and fulfilling, my original dream was that we have Lake Street closed and the food trucks and all of that activity out there. That will happen this year as well.
Yes.
You guys have just done a marvelous job at taking it to the next step, and we're proud to be your partners for an event that really showcases our community. We are all about local entrepreneurs.
We have to thank you. I mean, the first year is always the hardest, trying to set that groundwork, and you've made it so easy for us to kind of come in and see, you know, how can we make this grow. My vision is in five years, when this event is just, you know, you're fighting to get in there because you really want to be a part of this event. We are trying to really showcase it as a family-friendly event with the bounce houses, photos with Santa, you know, the whole nine yards there. We're also looking to extend it, you know, hopefully this year, and if not this year, putting together, you know, the canvas bags that are branded with different sponsor logos where it can be used year-long, where you can go through the Midtown District, say, and show your little shopping bag and you get 10% off, say. And so we're really trying to look at it from a long term and not just what we're going to do this year, but what is working, what isn't working, so that this is a program that's going to go on for years and it's only going to gain momentum and not just be a, you know, a one-trick pony, so.
Thank you very much.
Very exciting. I just have a, I just have a question. How, you guys have a great outreach program going, but how is we individual council members, how may we help you?
Right now, we are just asking that, you just mentioned it, you know, if you, if you, we really want those smaller businesses, and like I said, I really think that this is a grassroots campaign. You know, you can put out every commercial you want, you can, but it's really one of those things that you have to get in front of people and sell and, and sell how exciting and how lucky we are to have this event. So, I, I think it's, all I can ask of, of Council is that, you, you know, you just keep telling people about it, and don't forget about it, and it's a fun-filled event, and it's two days, and support, and, you know, if you have venues that you'd like to hang the posters in, that would be fantastic. Again, on Friday with this, this door-to-door, I'm looking to go in all the Starbucks and throw, you know, our posters in there, go through the community, the libraries, places along the lines that have a community board where we can hang the posters, and then just go, really go talk to business-to-business and hand them the application, say, "We really want you. We're here to support you." City of Reno, at the Chamber, we, we really appreciate you sticking around and, and supporting business, strong local business, so.
Since this is kind of an, an ongoing, recurring event, it, does it have its own, like, Facebook page where you can provide information?
Yes. So, what we've done this year is Alexis has set up the event on Facebook. Well, we've got the event, and then we've also established on the Chamber website, a landing page, and if you look on the poster and everything that we're putting out, it does have a QR code, so you can go there, or through all my email Blast, it's got a link directly towards there, through to the landing page. So, everything, we're trying to draw it back to, and there is a Facebook link on the landing page as well. So, we're trying, and everything I do feeds right into our Twitter, our LinkedIn, our Facebook. So, we're, we're really trying to go socially, I'm putting it on my personal Facebook, so any way that I can get the word out there is what we're trying to do.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great. The Council can just do things by talking it up and showing up. All right. You know, one day that I, I do want to bring up, I think it's about this time a year ago, that four of our new councilpeople got elected to this office, and it's about two weeks from now, they got sworn in. So, congratulations, gang. Glad to have you aboard. The probation was over 30 days after you got here. All right, let's go to future agenda items.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. We need to accommodate a new relationship that the Bayer Properties and the Summit Mall have with a financial partnership and LLC that's been formed. So, we need to correct or update the language in our agreement with them for that new assignment. And potentially, I didn't hear back from them if they're also going to be bringing forward some restructuring of that at the same time, but it was a potential. So, if staff could confirm.
Did they sell, like, the, I saw a brochure come out that they sold the place to the original people.
They just brought in new financial partners.
Yeah, and I, and I believe part of this, what they're wanting to bring back with the, some of the new financiers, as I understand it, and getting this language change is time-sensitive. So, that's why they wanted it, they needed it by.
So, it will be for our next meeting, that seems to be on the agenda, for the 20th.
Good. Any other items? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request staff time to review the ordinance being proposed for the maintenance and distribution of the newspaper and magazine rocks.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Been hearing a lot about the automatic sewer rate increase that we have scheduled, and I'm, I'm curious, I, I would like to know if staff has been given direction in the past to reexamine sewer rates based upon water usage, and if that's something that's being worked on. That can come in a presentation or memo form.
We can, we can report back on that. One thing that I'd like to do, there's an event coming up in February, Go Red for Women with Heart Disease, and trying to raise enough money to buy red light bulbs to change the art red during that month, and if any of you would donate a little of your discretionary fund to that, it's cost about, the, the red, the red bulbs we want are the high-condescendent, and they, they cost about $7,000. So, trying to raise the money. We could buy the regular ones, but they have to be, you lose about 25% of them every year, you change them. So, I would like to try to raise that money so we can do that. And so, I'd like that on the agenda, so if you would consider contributing $1,000 of your congressional funds or stuff like that, we'd really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, will you be wearing a dress again this year?
I, yes, I'll probably wear my red dress again this year.
Well, count me in.
We're only donating if you give, if you wear your dress.
Okay. Gino Martini and I probably will be in our dress. Any other items on there?
Are we, can we go over these? Oscar, are we going over these? Okay. Go ahead.
You got any other items?
No.
Okay. Item L2, any liaison reports? All right. Reports of any conference or professional meetings. I will be traveling to Los Angeles next week, participating in the National Endowment of the Arts Urban Development Program. They've got their seven mayors from the whole United States gathering there. The National Endowment of the Arts is paying my expense and stuff to participate. So, we will be going down and participating in that summit.
That's exciting. Not very many people get chosen to go to that.
No, and they, they have some real strict regulations, we found out. So, I will be going down to that. And Ms. McKissick will be traveling with me to go to be a staff and backup, because as y'all know, I know nothing about computers or that type of stuff, so. And then she's got the background to help me with those things. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's very exciting that we were selected, and we need to give huge credit to the Nevada Museum of Art for having made that connection for us. They were aware of the program and worked with our staff to submit the application, and having been selected as one of eight cities really is tremendous. And the, the project is just so severely needed, and how appropriate that you're talking about this today, having just taken action to be a better partner with the university. This project will be right there at the gateway and the entrance to our community at the university area that we're hoping that they'll provide us some good planning and ideas around.
And I think they will. You had seven of the top architects from everything, from landscape and everything else, that'll be there. So, it's going to be exciting. Ms. Sheevey, item L4?
I would like to, we talked about doing a business advisory task force, but we do have so many boards and commissions here at the city, that Michael Chomp and Bill Thomas, Fred Ternier, all came together and had such a wonderful idea of turning that into, instead of Reno Direct, Reno Business Direct. And it would work like the same process in the sense of that you would get a number allocated to your issue or small business question that they can address. And I think it, it really is the, the perfect way to start streamlining the process for people that need answers quickly when it comes to business, so that we can really address their concerns and be business-friendly.
Great idea. I think that's, that's a great, great idea. I do have a question, and it's as part of that, and maybe Fred can answer it. I know there's an evaluation of the business license fees that's being done. When is that coming back to us?
Thank you, Fred Ternier, Community Development Director. Actually, it's just not business license, it's the business and development, development and business process, and we're looking to come before the City Council in the first quarter, February, March of 2014, with a list of recommendations. And these recommendations are coming from our Business Enterprise Advisory Committee, and also other members of the public that have been invited, such as the Chamber.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second on item L4?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L6, Mr. Doggato?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm looking for support on this. I was approached after that, the sad event that happened in Sparks, and the Latino community had to come out and said, felt as though there was some, a lot of information that was, that they have not received, and they had a lot of questions. I thought this might be an opportunity also for, and also what I've understood is, the town hall meetings we've all had, which has been great, but also the, the missed opportunity in terms of, of the Spanish-speaking community participating. And so, that was brought to me to see if there's an opportunity where we can have a town hall meeting of sorts, where we can talk about some of the issues that the Spanish, Spanish-speaking community had in regards to school violence, in regards to gang activity, in terms of informational. And so, what I was looking at is seeing if we can have some time to correlate or work with the school district, with the Sparks PD or the school police, so we can kind of have a forum for that opportunity. I spoke with, and some of the newspapers have said that they'd be willing to promote this event as well. So, if, get some support so we can kind of coordinate this. I think it'd be great to, before we get into the holiday season, to hopefully answer some questions that have been sitting out there.
Good. That's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. We'll do some research on it, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, there is a public hearing tonight, item, at 6 o'clock, item M1, the Petro Solutions. It's been appealed by Ed Hawkins and Beverly and Lavoy Witter. So, that will be at 6 o'clock. Is there any public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, because we're in recess. Okay, any other things you want to bring up? Chair, entertain a motion to go into recess.
Recession until 6:00.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll be in recess.
This is a public hearing scheduled for 6:00. Madam Secretary?
And for the record, proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
Okay. Item M1 has been appealed, and we will give the appellant 15 minutes, and staff will also give its report. Do you have a preference? Would you like to go first, or would you prefer to have? Okay, staff?
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for a special use permit to establish an oil recycling tank farm on a 1.2 acre site located along the east side of Mount Anderson Street, approximately 200 feet south of Cocoa Avenue in the industrial zone. The special use permit is specifically to allow chemical processing in the industrial zone. This project was considered by the Planning Commission on October 2nd, 2013, where the commission determined they could make the findings necessary to approve the requested special use permit, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Specifically, the commission determined the use was appropriate for the site, and that all the technical issues related to how the project will be constructed, operated, and maintained will be appropriately addressed at the building permit stage and via the monitoring and enforcement regulations administered by Washoe County Health, City Environmental Services, and the City Fire Department. They agreed all the findings could be made, and particularly finding F, that the project would not create adverse environmental impacts such as fumes, pollution, or odors, because the odor, oversight and regulations in place to construct and operate and maintain the facility. At this time, I'd like to briefly go through the approval process that we're going through in this case. First of all, you're considering a special use permit, which must be approved. The special use permit addresses the appropriateness of the land use for the site, including any conditions necessary to mitigate the project impacts. The next steps include review and issuance of the business license to operate the facility, which requires approval by the City Fire, Environmental Services, Police, and Planning Staff. The applicant is also required to obtain a building permit where the various departments and agencies review the plans for compliance with the regulations, including fire and building. This process also requires review of the project for environmental concerns such as discharges into the city sewer, as well as city fire and county health requirements, to ensure the project is built consistent with all applicable requirements. Business license cannot be issued until the facility has been constructed and issued a final inspection by the Building Department. So, that kind of covers the licensing side of the project. Should the project be approved, and once the facility is constructed and operation, there are several monitoring and enforcement mechanisms in place. These include inspections by County Health, Environmental Services, and City Fire. These inspections would occur at least once a year, but can occur more often as necessary to address any reported or ongoing deficiencies. Code enforcement is also available to investigate complaints for planning and building issues. County Health and City Environmental Services are the local administrators of NDEP, Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, and EPA regulations, and would bring these agencies in for consultation and enforcement as necessary. The final enforcement step, if necessary, would be proceedings to revoke the special use permit, which is first reviewed by the Planning Commission, who makes a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council has the final decision. To answer your questions tonight, as necessary, there are representatives here from City Fire, Environmental Services, and the County Health Department. Again, this hearing is, tonight is to determine if the use proposed is appropriate for the site. All the technical aspects of the project as to how it will be constructed, inspected, monitored, are all contained in code, the several agencies and departments, as previously discussed. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins?
For the record, I'm Ed Hawkins, Ward 4, North Valley's NAB Chair. I want to say good evening. I was going to say good evening to the mayor, he's not present, and the council, and since Andrew's not here, Mr. Thomas. Tonight, we're here to determine the outcome of the proposed project, LDC 14-00014. My appeal is regarding item F, which I don't think is being, I don't believe you'll find item F as being passable, regarding the environmental impact on our area if there is an oil spill. There are three Tamwah municipal wells in the vicinity of this proposed project, and numerous aquifers that lead into these wells. If a spill were to occur, and it reached the aquifers, the effects would be catastrophic, and I'll use that word several times. When talking with Tamwah Water Quality, I learned that Tamwah uses these aquifers to bank water for future use. Again, a spill would be catastrophic. The Reno Stead wastewater facility services all of Stead to include the proposed project site. If a spill were to occur, and the oil or antifreeze were to make its way to the treatment plant, the effects would be, a little minor, devastating. Service to the residents would be affected to include limited use of toilets and wastewater release. Regardless of who operates an oil recycling facility, there are always going to be potentials for oil spills or oil leaks. The picture you see in front of you right now is the old Budweiser plant down there off of Woodland in the Mayberry Industrial Park. That has 12 tanks ready to go for oil recycling. It's 1,000 feet from those tanks to the Truckee River, another 2,000 feet downstream to chalk bluff intake for Tamwah's water. I don't want it out in my area in the aquifers or the wells. You don't want it there to come down the Truckee River. If there was to be an oil spill, you can imagine what would take place. Has the same zoning as where the proposed project's supposed to be, and I respectfully ask that the City Council reverse the Reno Planning Commission's decision and not allow this project to move forward. I don't want to see any oil recycling out there because of the aquifers, the three municipal wells, and potential catastrophic hazards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. This was jointly appealed by Beverly and Lavoy Whittier. Are there any additional comments or presentations? Sir, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrew. My name's Peter Smith. I'm an attorney for the Petro Solutions. Brian Fabian and his wife are the owners. And then we've also brought Nathan Robinson, who's the engineer that designed the plan of operations that was submitted to the Planning Commission.
One second, before we move on. Was there any other, the other appellants, did they want to be heard?
That's who I was asking for. The Whittiers.
There's a, Miss Whittier, I understand Mr. Fabian's talked to Miss Whittier, and apparently she's satisfied that, she's a person that sold the property to them, and she wanted to make sure that there were enough, enough controls and conditions on the issuance of this permit so that her property would be safe.
Okay. And I understand that.
I understand that she's satisfied.
And we'll hear that from staff as well, but you're not representing the other appellant, correct? Okay, then we'll get to you at the appropriate time.
Okay, we're available, we're available for any questions or anything.
Thank you. And we'll get you.
Thank you so much.
Promise. All right. Madam Secretary, I don't show any public comment forms. Are there any?
We have none.
Okay. Then we will bring it to the table for questions. Okay, all right. Now, please come forward.
I'm back, thank you. We have the staff report that was, that was submitted to the Planning Commission, and we have the staff report that was submitted to you, to the council. And we agree wholeheartedly with everything that's in the staff reports, and we appreciate Mr. Clu's detailed analysis of the, of the whole process. And we don't really have very much to add to that unless the council has some questions.
All right. Thank you. We will now open and comment here from the council, from the dais, and this is in Ward Four. Mr. Dorch, would you like to begin?
Just real quick from staff, I've just got a couple of questions, really. In the event of a spill, how is that handled? I don't know who on staff wants to handle that. Yeah, our staff.
For the record, Ryan Byrd, Environmental Services Supervisor. Typically, what we do in a spill plan that would be required of our applicant, they would list out contractors to be available 24 hours, seven days a week. And when you say spill, it would obviously be based on the size and quantity of that spill. They would also be required to give us immediate notification so that it didn't just happen and got swept under the rug, no different than we permit our other 1,600 people concurrently. So.
And I guess when we do our analysis of whether or not this was appropriate, do we look at the possibility of a spill and maybe leaking into the Tamwah tanks or Tamwah reservoirs that were mentioned?
Absolutely. That's part of the criteria.
And we don't, staff doesn't feel that there's any concern with regards to that?
I don't have the same opinion of the attorney. This is step one. Just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. When typically the process is handled, an applicant comes into the business license process, it goes through a series of checks. Part of that check was because of the use, it had to get the SUP. We got the special use permit. Now, we're in the process, once we get passed, hopefully tonight, of collecting a lot of that data so we can perform our analysis, which is both at a federal, state, and local level, to ensure we have all the proper safeguards and all those things are met. So we're not quite there yet.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any others? Ms. Breckus?
Thank you. So as part of that process, since the water treatment plant was brought up, would Tamwah be a part of that discussion and their input?
No. No. What we do here internally with the city, we regulate the sanitary sewer and industrial stormwater. I can't substantiate one way or the other if that spill would impact Tamwah. I mean, I could relate that same scenario that Mr. Hawkins said to a lot of places in town. We're just focused on this site here, and it's no different than the other sites we have all over this community. We look at it from the same point of view.
Okay. I have questions for Mr. Close. I'm unclear, have, have the appellants withdrawn their appeal? Not Mr. Hawkins, but the other appellants?
I'm not aware of that. I didn't receive an official withdrawal, and the clerk would have record about if that occurred. But no, I'm not aware that.
Are they here tonight?
I do not see them.
Okay. Okay. But they were noticed of the hearing. I was looking at Table 1808, is it 05? Land use classifications table. I don't see tank farm as a classified use, nor do I see it in the definitions. What is a tank farm?
That's what they're calling it. What we're calling it is, what did I say it was? It's in the staff report. It's not, it's a chemical processing. We don't have a specific tank farm use. We classified it as chemical processing.
I mean, if you don't, you know, if the use.
And that was based on consulting with Environmental Services, because I wanted to more specifically define what the use was based on the uses on our use chart.
Yeah.
And it was either that or hazardous waste, and that would not come into play in this particular instance unless they brought in the recyclables from out of state, then that would be considered hazardous waste through the Health Department regulations. And that would also require a special use permit, which is not, you know, requested at this point.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, you say the use required a special use permit, you need to say what the use is. If it's not a use in the code, then, you know, you have to put it somewhere. Would you say it's outdoor manufacturing, processing, assembly, or fabrication?
No. Again, it's, it's, it's chemical processing is what we've determined to be on page three of the.
Chemical, oh, okay. Chemical processing and/or manufacture.
Correct.
Okay. I see what you're calling it. I just, because I didn't see that in the staff report. I understand. So that's the classification, right? And I guess my other question is, did Tamwah have any comments? Did you route this to them?
We did not receive any, and they're, they would not necessarily be a standard one we would route this to at this particular point. Usually, we route ones related to water usage, not a process that would not generate a whole lot of water usage.
Yeah, but it's a wellhead, you know, he's raising wellhead protection issues, certainly. So, and then what about this use, which we're calling chemi, you know, this specific, you know, activity within the chemical manufacturing or chemical processing? Do we have any of these presently in the city of Reno? He showed a photo, but I didn't see that, that's going on there.
Oh, as far as oil recycling places?
Yeah.
No.
So this is a new start for Reno, okay. And he's under our Environmental Services regulations, and our Environmental Services Division regulates this activity under, I guess, some federal agreement or program, correct? What federal law are we under? And permits are required of a federal or state nature?
For the record, Ryan Byrd, it's federal pre-treatment, 40 CFR, Part 403.
Okay, so it's pre-treatment.
Yeah, we have about 1,600 pages of regulation, and we also changed our code, thanks to you folks, last month or the month before. And a lot of that dovetails Reno Municipal Code, so it would be, it would mirror one another.
Okay. Oh, I remember that.
At the end of the day, all the safeguards are going to have to be met before the issues or any other use like it would have to be permitted. And I can, I can tell you, I don't have enough data tonight to say one way or the other if this is a go or no go.
And does then, do you fulfill all the environmental permitting obligations, or do you share those with NDEP?
We fulfill the bulk of them, based on their conceptual model that they've submitted. Now, if they go, if they start doing some rather strange mixing of wastes, then we can get into some other things. And I think we have the county here tonight to maybe, if they want to articulate what they might get into at some further point in time.
Yeah.
But for the bulk of it, 90, 90-plus percent is us.
Okay, 90% of it would be us. What I'm getting at is, sometimes when we get to these more complex operations, which have different layers of regulation, you know, different layers of regulations on them, we're just looking at the land use. And, but if we get into a situation where environmental problems are occurring, or there's permit not, you know, and resulting in permit, say, measures by other, you know, that jeopardizes a permit they hold by other agencies, say you, do you have administrative authority, or do you go through a process to, you notice a problem out there? What do you, what do you do?
With respect to our permit for the industrial stormwater, anything going to the sewer, we absolutely have primacy.
You have primacy?
Absolutely.
Is it administrative in nature?
I believe so, based on the monetary fines we can implement, because we can, we can implement monetary fines and suspend or revoke the business license as part of our code revisions that we've just recently adopted and codified.
Oh, you can revoke business licenses through your process.
Yes, yes, we've gone down that road before.
Because what I'm seeing is, we have the authority to revoke special use permits.
As far as you being the county?
Well, it says the city for, you know, false applications, but also if there's a public nuisance or constituted a danger to public health, safety, or welfare. And I guess if, if they are, if there's some permit violation on a different body of regulations, environmental in nature, would that constitute a danger to the public health, do you think? I mean, is that, is that what non?
I don't know how to answer that, Jenny. You're asking me an arbitrary question.
Okay, yeah. But, but when you get under these stormwater permits that you issue, how many activities, non-compliance, and environmental problems do you see a year? How many of these do we have in industrial uses around town?
Well, we have numerous, numerous violations, but most of those are record-keeping.
Uh-huh.
It's a guy who trips over a pail and doesn't wash it up.
Okay.
We're not talking catastrophic events.
Okay.
I mean, you guys see all those on the TV. Those are very, very minute in nature.
Yeah.
And I would attribute that to the safeguards that we implement and install on these people.
Okay.
As part of the permit conditions.
Okay, so on your check, on your checks through, like, once a year, we might see poor record-keeping, and that would be a, an administrative notification?
Correct.
But not a permit jeopardy sort of thing?
Well, it depends. If they haven't followed certain safeguards and haven't written that down, and they continue to do that, we can start fining them, which we do.
Uh-huh.
And if it gets further escalated, where there's things that they need to pump out and don't clean, we can suspend or revoke their business license or whatever. We have a full gamut of things that we can do.
Okay, so that's your regulatory framework, which is also part of the city's.
Correct.
Okay, I guess that concludes my questions. Thank you. Ms. Shivi?
Could be impacted by this, been notified? I don't know who I'm talking to, but.
Vern Close, Senior Planner, that's a pretty broad question. Basically, when the special use permit comes in, we have a list of agencies that we refer this to for review.
How, and how many possibly around there? I mean, if you're saying it's sort of broad, I mean, this could affect a lot of entities around this area.
Are you talking about uses surrounding the site? Well, the site is 500 feet from, it's surrounded by industrial-type uses for at least 500 feet around the perimeter of the site. To the northwest and south, it's, goes on for a fairly long distance. To the east, I believe the Job Corps centers in that area, to the northeast. But pretty much all the uses out there are industrial-type uses, industrial warehousing, manufacturing, those types of uses.
And then I guess this would be more for the owners. What kinds of procedures are put into place to secure safety? And what type of background do you have? Is this something you're extremely familiar with? How does this work? I think we kind of need to break it down a little bit.
And identify yourself again, please.
Peter Smith. The staff report to the Planning Commission included the plan of operations that Ms. Robinson put together, you know, as, as an engineering professional, to meet all the standards required for, for the health and safety and backup systems. The tanks, the tanks themselves are, have what's called secondary containment, which is a berm, or we're talking about putting them actually below ground level, so that if the largest tank burst, has total catastrophic failure, and all this used oil went, went leaking out, the secondary containment would hold 110% of the largest tank that's, that's in the, in the group. So the oil's not going to just gush across the property and find its way down the river. It can't do that. And oil doesn't soak into the ground more than a couple of inches. So, I mean, the aquifer is down, I don't know how far it is, but it's, I'm sure it's 50 or 100 or a couple hundred feet down. So there's, those aren't problems. There's a whole body of regulations, and the design of the facility has to do with safety interlocks, and there's the heat, there's the, the product doesn't get heated up in the process over 100 or 110 degrees. It's just enough to make it so it keeps moving during the winter time through the, through the cold pipes. And so it doesn't get close to being flammable, really. I mean, you can, you can burn motor oil, but you have to have a wick, and you have to hold a match to it, and you have to make an effort. It doesn't just explode like gasoline. So, what else can I tell you?
I think we, I just wanted a little bit more clarity of the safety procedures that go into that and what it sort of entails, so, thank you.
Well, it's a, I mean, 100 years ago, this is a serious problem, and in some, some parts of the world, they haven't caught up to what we've been doing with industrial technology in our country to protect ourselves from that. So the United States is really a great place to be.
Madam Mayor, may I ask?
Yes.
Follow-up question. Is your client aware that this body, if it's the one that grants the special use permit, has the powers to revoke that special use permit if those conditions I discussed previously occur, such as using it, you know, to cause a public health risk or a nuisance, or if there's false or misleading statements in the application, or it's used contrary to the permit?
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly, and Mr. Fabian's be happy to, you know, to speak on his own behalf. He doesn't really need me to polish it up for you.
Well, that's okay, as long as you're aware of that. And I guess one last question for staff is, it sounds like from Mr. Hawkins's comments that those are reinjection wells. They're not necessarily wellheads. Do you, I wish we had Tamwah here to.
So do I, because I don't have the answer to that question.
But isn't that discussion something that would come at the next, potentially at the next step?
No, no. I think it's, it's, you know, under our job, and it doesn't sound like it's under Mr. Byrd's regulations. I mean, he's looking at, you know, the site and the protocols. But it sounds like they're reinjection wells.
Madam Mayor, if I can, perhaps what you're really talking about is a condition, since we don't have specifics on what it would do to the wells, I believe they're actually water supply wells.
They are.
Yes, that supplies water periodically to the Tamwah system out there. The question really is, what could an event that happened in this situation do, or how could it affect those wells? And that's the information we don't have tonight, but I think you could probably put a safeguard in to say that, you know, this particular project will not have an adverse impact on that, and that would be the way to, if they did something that caused a problem to the well, then it would require it being brought back to the council to say, you know, what did you do? Maybe we shouldn't give you the special use permit, or we should revoke it because you violated what, you know, you represented to us, you weren't going to impact the well. I mean, that's about all you could do tonight without Tamwah being here. And I'm not sure, even if they were here, they'd be able to tell you anything other than, here's where our well is, here's how far it is. We don't really have any wellhead protection ordinances, per se.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be taken care of in the spill plan?
It should.
I mean, I mean, when it comes down to it, if you're going to put a spill plan together, you're going to look for containment, I would assume.
For the record, Ryan Byrd, you're, you're correct.
I mean, so you're not, I mean.
What we're going to be looking at is all the inputs of the applicant.
Yeah, you're not going to let it have any adverse impact on any of the adjacent properties, I would assume.
Correct. Now, accidents do occur, accidents do happen, and we would also have safeguards for that as well, with emergency folks ready to roll, no differently than what happens, you know, on a week basis here in the community.
But you're looking for containment. When you're looking at a spill plan, you're looking at containment within the property, I would assume.
Containment, people to get ahold of, contractors to get on-site, notifications, emergency personnel, all the above, correct?
Right.
Is some of the containment site improvements, such as walls, or leach fields, or, well, I guess you wouldn't have leach fields, but design considerations.
We will be evaluating that in the weeks to come, hopefully. Yes.
Okay.
Again, this is step one, Jenny. This is, you know, we've got a conceptual business model to look at.
Yeah.
And there's some questions that we need to get addressed, and these guys will provide that to us momentarily.
Okay.
Mister, if there are no further questions here, Mr. Hawkins, you had plenty of time left in your original presentation. Is there anything else you'd like to address or ask?
One thing that, Ed Hawkins, uh, for the record, one thing I do want to mention that wasn't brought up is it's not just recycled oil, it's also going to be antifreeze. So, yes, if, if oil was to spill out, yeah, it might go down a, a few inches, a few feet, but we're also talking about antifreeze and ethylene glycol. There's a problem there. So, it's all encompassing on this spill, if it occurs. I mean, you're not going to do anything with those infused wells or water wells, once you get ethylene glycol or oil inside those wells. Back in the eighties and nineties, they bore 87 monitoring holes in the state area because of what the Air Force left stacked up and piled and, and buried around the, uh, adjacent vicinity, okay? They, they've just, in 92, 94, come up with tolerable levels of, uh, of chemicals in there that allow for use for drinking. Uh, we don't need to go back down the same, same course. So, it's just not oil. There's, there's antifreeze going to be processed here too, or recycled.
Um, thank you. Madam Mayor, may I ask Mr. Close one more question? Your condition number two says the applicant shall apply for all building permits for the project within 18 months from the date of final approval, and continuously maintain the validity of those permits, or this approval shall be null and void. And when it means those permits, it doesn't mean Mr. Byrd's permits. It means this permit, the special use permit, and building permits, correct?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, yes, it means the building permits to actually construct the facility, for the tanks, the containment, the paving, landscaping, those sorts of things.
And, and picking up off of Mr. Thomas's comments, I would suggest that we somehow tie this approval to these other permits the city has that are not mentioned or contemplated in your condition, and I would say maybe something like the validity of this special use permit may be compromised, and it's kind of a maybe, because the council is the one who makes that decision whether or not to revoke. Should there be invalidation of, or violations of other permits issued for this property, for this use? And I think that's a safeguard that would tie this permit to other permits. And I would recommend that to, um, the, um, council as an extra safeguard, because I, I see that there's a real strong line between those permits and these permits, and the two don't necessarily work together.
That would probably clarify the council's intent on extending that, um, but still, if they were in violation of the SUP, it still could be considered for revocation, even, going through, going through the other agencies' kind of enforcement and monitoring processes. So, if it got to the point where it just kept getting worse, and was the point that we say, okay, I think we need to revoke the special use permit, then those proceedings could occur. Um, but the language, again, it would just make it more clear what it, what the, you know, the intent of the council is on, on that. But I think it's, it is still covered under the revocation process.
Okay.
I, I just, I think we're confusing the actual land use with the operation. I, I, I think, I mean, we're making a land use decision here today, and then if they want to operate this, then they have to go through the processes that are outlined, and, and get their license. And if there's, if they violate or have any problems with that, then staff has the authority to revoke their license based upon those. I just think we're confusing the two issues.
Well, I think that making our regulations as seamless as possible, where they're in coordination, is actually a better practice, so I, I would disagree with you on that.
I'd like to get Jonathan's thoughts on that. I just, to me, it seems we're going over the line there.
Um, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, I think, what I, what I heard from this entire process is, again, we're at the beginning point in a much longer process.
Absolutely, that's the point I'm trying to make.
And, um, you know, and, and it's kind of, I, I can understand the difficulty, because it's, you're, you're planning for something that, you know, you don't necessarily see or can envision today, but again, that's the point of, um, all these different layers of fire, of environmental, of police, of zoning-
Right.
On the licensing side, and then you have the enforcement side on top of that.
Right.
So, and there's continually monitoring and that sort of thing. So, um, again, that's, I, I somewhat agree on the fact of an operation versus a land use decision. The land use decision is more aimed at, is this the appropriate use on this particular site?
Well, I think what I'm getting at, Mr. Shipman, is 1822-202B, the revocation powers, and providing a little guidance that revocation may involve some compromise, you know, and that, and that's essentially what condition two of Mr. Close's staff report is referencing, maintaining the validity. And then this shows if the validity, it outlines a procedure if the validity is compromised. And what I'm trying to do is provide a little extra guidance on what the council's thinking would be if they were to go down that path, and that, one of that thinking is that there's violation of another permit, and I think it's very appropriate thinking of the council, and I, I'm not necessarily thinking it's, it's a flawed point of law. So, I disagree, but, um, it's certainly, uh, the rest of the council's considerations. And I would just say, the validity of this special use permit may be compromised, should there be invalidation of other, um, or violations of other permits held by this applicant, for this project.
Mr. Hawkins, I saw that you might have another comment.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, uh, the problem I have is, if, if this is approved tonight, one year is way too long for, for an inspection, I'm sorry. You're going to have to put it at about two weeks or 30 days, because if this builds up over the course of a year, when you have an inspection, and then all of a sudden we say, oops, well, oops is too late, okay? And then, if there are fines levied, they've got to be substantial, so someone learns a lesson. That's a biggie.
Any further discussion?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Can we actually have, um, fire come and speak to? Okay. Hi.
Good evening, Jeff Donahue, Fire Marshal.
Thank you. Can you tell us, have you worked in any of this capacity before? What, give us your thoughts and how safe you think this is?
I've worked in this capacity approximately 32 years.
Well, I know, but, I mean, how often do you see these, what are we calling them? Tank farms?
Yes, I've worked in tank, with around the tank farms and the codes involved with that.
For 32 years?
I started in Colorado with actual oilhead wells in my fire district and actually fought those fires.
Okay, so you're an expert in this?
I won't claim to be.
Okay. I, I say you are. So, give us some background, please.
Basically, um, the material submitted, as submitted, is what we consider a Class 3B combustible liquid. Fire-wise, it's very, uh, as the applicant's attorney stated, it's very tough for this to be a fire hazard. As everybody may know, the difference between gasoline and diesel, gasoline ignites very fast, diesel is tough. Used oil in an uncontaminated state is almost impossible to start unless you have a sustained fire issue. So, the fire code doesn't even really address it. It does identify it, but, um, the fire code doesn't even require a substantial permitting for the storage of it in any quantities, because it's not really considered the material is a fire hazard. That is, also goes for the antifreeze. The antifreeze is also a 3B, combustible liquid. Where it becomes a little bit of a problem, and this is one of the things that we would definitely verify with the applicant, is that if it comes in contaminated, say that you collect it from a, um, like a junkyard where they're tearing down cars, and you may have a person out there that's putting gasoline, transmission fluid, power steering fluid, used oil into the containers, and they pick that up. Then the consistency of the material changes quite a bit, and it would not maintain that 3B classification, and there is a fire risk with it. So, one of the things that we would do in the process of the operation is ensure that what they're actually using is a 3B, so that minimizes the fire hazard. In the actual construction process, we have two major sections of the fire code that we will address during the plan review process. One is the secondary containment for these tanks. It's addressed in two specific sections of the fire code, and again, as the applicant's attorney stated, that it does require 110% containment, so that if there is a spill of any sort, it stays within that. The reason that we have the 110% containment of the, uh, largest quantity is in the event that if we have to add water in a firefighting capability, for some reason, it also contains that contaminated water. So, through this process, once the building plans are submitted, and we receive, uh, those sets of plans, as with the building department, we will be reviewing the project quite extensively in two sections of the fire code. Again, not so much about the fire safety issue of it because of the material, but also to ensure that it meets the requirements of the storage containers and, and the secondary containment. Once it's completed, it'll become part of a routine inspection process with us, so that it maintains in compliance with the fire code. Thank you.
Vern, we understand that the, um, other appellants are not here tonight, Beverly and Lee, Lavoy, Whittier. What do you know their specific concerns and objections were?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, my idea of what their concerns were is that they sold this property to the applicant, and the applicant is making payments on it, and they were concerned that if things went bad, they would be stuck with cleaning up the site if the person walked from the facility and, and didn't comply with, you know, there was a spill or something like that. That, that was their primary concern that I, I was aware of.
And can you reiterate how that, um, would be rectified, or how the impact on them would or would not occur?
Well, from my understanding of all the codes and regulations we have, and in fact, you know, there's inspection, there's containment, there's those sorts of, um, um, regulations in effect, that, that, that should cover it, but, you know, that, that's, there's always a possibility for an accident or a spill. But the, the folks in environmental and the health department could better, and the fire department could better tell you how that stuff is, is, uh, addressed, but I believe they've kind of gone through all that up to this point anyway. So, I, I, we believe that all the regulations are in place to ensure that this doesn't happen, doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but we believe that, you know, it, it covers the situation very well.
And could you address the concern that, um, Mr. Hawkins just expressed, that a year is too long of a time period for the inspection? What would your, your response be?
Well, again, I do know that the fire department would expect, inspect it at least yearly, the environmental control people would also, but they have the ability, if there's a complaint, to go out there every day and inspect it. So, if there's a leak, they go out and inspect, did they remediate it? They go out the next day, no, they didn't, that, you know, then they can go through their process of, um, fines and, and potentially revoking their business license, those sorts of things. So, um, the inspection yearly is basically a standard schedule, um, but it can be increased if there are reports or complaints about the operation. Generally, that would go to Reno Direct, code enforcement would go out there, whatever agency of the city that's related to that complaint would go and inspect and, and take the appropriate action.
And is it reasonable to expect that residents or citizens who are concerned about the project would have access to be able to lobby a legitimate complaint? How would they know if there was a spill? What would be their access to be able to do their own self-assessment to report?
Um, as far as complaint, if, if they were driving by and noticed something, you know, they see brand-new, clean tanks, and the next day they have oil leaking out of them, they could make that complaint. Again, it would be based on, um, observations, um, of, you know, the, the neighbors right next door, as far as someone operating a facility right next door, they probably would have a better idea of if there's a problem there or not versus someone just driving by. But anybody that thinks there's something wrong, they can lodge that complaint, and it would be inspected, and, you know, it would be followed up upon, and if there is a problem, it would be addressed. If there isn't, at least, um, we would have, you know, gone out and inspected to see if there really was one or not.
Mr. George?
Yeah, um, I can make the findings, in particular finding F, but I can make all of the findings in this case, and with that, I will make a motion to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Would you accept that friendly amendment I made to condition two, that I would also add, um, a second sentence that, and it's more, per se, that, um, that, that section related to revocation is, um, pertains to statements and representations in the special use permit. We heard from our fire, uh, official that, you know, if, if certain, uh, materials come in that aren't, you know, on the list, um, that could cause problems. And so, revocation of the special use permit would also be if there were any, uh, you know, misrepresentations of, in the other permits that they are going to be seeking from the fire or environmental permitting. So, I would provide a little more protection to us to act swiftly, uh, because the revocation of special use permit, I believe, can act much more swift than Mr. Byrd, or, uh, NDEP, or anyone else can.
I mean, I think we've got the, the proper procedures in code to address those issues, and typically, if we're going to add a condition to, to this, the condition has got to help us make the findings. And I can make the findings without that additional language, and I don't know what that additional language would do to help me make the findings. I mean, if we're going to condition a special use permit, you condition it so that it'll help you make the findings. I mean, that's the purpose.
My sentences would help me make those findings.
And, and, and the thing that concerned me with the language that you submitted was, I think you said that the validity of this permit may be compromised in the event these other issues happen, but it doesn't talk about how it's compromised, what the procedure is to revoke it. It doesn't, it doesn't address any of that. It's already addressed in code. So, so, I, to me, it's, it's, it's very vague language that we're putting in there, and it just, it concerns me that it's vague, and it doesn't, it's not specific, it doesn't tell them, it doesn't say how their permit would be revoked, but if, if, if the other permits are revoked, they're out of business. And, and you're tying it to that clause anyway. So, I, I don't know what, I don't know what it accomplishes.
Well, I think, you know, um, just the, the default reading, which is implied in that sentence, is that the validity is, 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 has to go through a revocation process. And, and that's what that condition says, and I'm tying it to other things that could happen, and I think it provides a little more certainty in a path. And I'll, and I'll, again, elaborate, my reason for this is that the council, through the SUP revocation, can move much quicker, in my mind, than the environmental regulators can.
But you're, but you're tying it to them revoking one of those other permits?
Yes, and, or in, in the process of, or administrative, you know, activity.
So, you're saying, but you're saying that they, we can act quicker, but they've got to, they've, they've got to revoke the permit for us to act according to, to the language that you're submitting?
No, I'm saying, should there be, well, two things. Should there be violations? Okay, so, maybe a violation comes up, and it's, we didn't check this or that. Maybe a violation comes up, and it spills, it doesn't get as far to the wellhead, but the council looks here and says, well, there was contemplation that there could be violations. It didn't, you know, and how serious of it is, let's go through and make these findings we have to make to revoke. And so, that would be set in place, that process. We would still give a due process hearing on a revocation. Likewise, if it's found that the fire, uh, folks see that on their permits that they process, uh, that I don't think are contemplated in this, um, they're bringing in a, a material, like he said, you know, a material that they weren't prepared to take, we would also say that false, false representations or statements were conducted, and through the, we would move on our special use permit revocation, but always pursuant to this process.
I'd like to hear from Jonathan on this, because-
For the record, John Shipman, just, um, just so we're all clear, um, you mentioned the section 1822-202, subsection B, the revocation, the general authorization. I think what you're, you're getting to is already covered there. I mean, I can read you what it talks about. Unless otherwise addressed in a specific provision of Title 18, the city may revoke any development permit, approval, or other authorization granted under this Title 18, after notice and an opportunity to be heard for any of the following reasons. You know, one, developing, establishing, or conducting a use of land contrary to the conditions or permit, or in violation of any law or ordinance. Two, developing or conducting a use of land in such a manner as to create a public nuisance or constitute a danger to the public health, safety, or welfare. Or three, a fraud, mis- safety, or welfare. Or three, a fraud, misrepresentation, or false statements in the permit or development application. So, I mean, potentially, if I understand what you're suggesting, you're restating essentially the 1822-202 provision, but as a condition of their permit, but it's already, you already have that power, I guess, is the point.
I think, I think that could be argued, because it's Title 18. Mr. Byrd's body of regulations do not reside in 18. Fires do not reside in 18. And, for example, that number three, fraud, misrepresentation, or false statements in the permit or development application. So those are only Title 18 activities, okay? So if there's materials, like the material sheets that he requires, and they bring in other materials, I'd like to give guidance that even a violation of that would make us look at our special use permit and consider that we would be revoking, moving through consideration of revoking this special use permit. I think that provides extra...
You could actually look at subsection one, refers to the violation of any law or ordinance.
Does not say permit or regulation.
Okay. I mean, I guess, the only point I would make is, you're free to include that language in there, but I, just as, from the city attorney's office, I think we could defend it, if that language is there or it's not there. I mean, if they're, if, on the permit side, if they're doing something that's in violation of a permit, you know, that can be taken, you know, for the regulatory authority that has authorization over that permit, to the extent that they are doing something that creates a public nuisance if there is a catastrophic event. I think you definitely, under subsection two, have the ability to act immediately on that.
So Mr. Byrd finds out, there's five materials coming in, in contrast to what their sheets are, or whatever it is.
Right.
We can move towards revoking a special use permit on that solely alone.
Yeah, because if that, for instance, kicks it from a chemical manufacturing facility into a hazardous waste, you know, which is the concern that the fire department has raised in the past, I think that clearly flies in the face of subsection one, conducting a use of land contrary to the conditions of the permit. They're just not authorized to use, to do a hazardous waste type of function when they're authorized for doing a chemical processing and manufacturer operation.
Mr. Turnier, and then Ms. Jarden, you still were responding to that question, correct?
Yes, yes, just a clarification. Thank you. Fred Turnier, committee and development director, just as the administrator of our development code, how I would interpret that is any applicable permits that are out there, be it in business license, Title V, Title VIII, any title within the city code. And also, from an operations standpoint, with the more use we have on our Acela software, we're actually attaching code violations to Acela, so that if anyone who's looking up a piece of property, they can actually see violations associated with specific parcel numbers.
Okay. Ms. Jarden?
He actually answered my questions. We're ready to vote.
All right. I did, I see a lot of people out there, we do have a motion and a second. I do see a lot of people who did not submit public comment forms. If there is anybody who would like to reconsider that, I will give you that opportunity. Mr. Hawkins?
On the original paperwork I got when we met with the applicant and Vern in the conference room on the second floor, it indicates EPA ID number is pending. When I talked to the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, they indicated to me, the only time you need an EPA number is if you're bringing in hazardous material from the state of California. We don't see oil and antifreeze as a hazardous material until it comes from the state of California. Then we have to recognize state of California, and that becomes a hazardous material. You guys need to be aware of that. If he's got an EPA ID number pending, that means he could possibly be bringing in material from California, and then that becomes hazardous material in the state of Nevada.
But it'd be a violation of his business license?
I think more so, it would be a terms for revocation of the special use permit, because the representation has been that there are not hazardous materials coming. So he may even...
And he doesn't have a license for hazardous materials.
So if through the subsequent permitting process, we see anything come in that calls into question the information in the special use permit process, I would expect staff to bring back that question to us for a consideration of revocation.
For the record, Ryan Byrd, you're correct. He doesn't have a permit to do stuff with hazardous materials. If that was to occur, that would actually trigger the state of Nevada to step in as well, and possibly federal action.
With all these, with this question, is the applicant, is the applicant in a position where he feels comfortable that he has made a complete and thorough application as he plans to conduct his business?
Brian Fabian Petro Solutions. Yes, I think we've made all the applications on everything. We don't currently have an EPA number pending for that property, but it is my understanding that you're supposed to have an EPA number, even if you're just dealing with Nevada oil, which is what we intend to do, and antifreeze. And so, once I got a special use permit and a business license, I would assume that I'm supposed to get an EPA number for the site, because we are the first to claim, once we pick it up, then we would be able to certify with lab analysis that it meets the requirements for recycled fuel. And to do that, you need, you need to get the EPA number and get the approval from the NDP for that particular part of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to item number N, public comment. Madam Secretary?
I have none.
We have none?
Move to adjourn.
Motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.